Welcome to the January 25, 2024 public hearing for the Southampton Town Planning Board. May we have a roll call?
Chair LaFaro.
Present.
Vice Chair Finity is absent. The secretary is here. Board Member Catalinato.
Present.
Board Member Mutu.
Present.
Board Member Neely.
Present.
Board Member Fulham is absent.
Thank you. We have a quorum. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, a free and democratic republic for which it stands one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as for all.
Thank you. So just before we start, item number two on the agenda is off the agenda. There was not sufficient posting to have the hearing. That was 1004 Montauk Highway. So we'll start with Sandy Hollow, 25 Sandy Hollow Road. And we have sufficient notice, counsel?
We do, Madam Chair.
And Tom, do you want to read that?
Sure. Please take notice that in accordance with Local Law Number 14 of 2022, a public hearing will be held by the Southampton Town Planning Board on Thursday, January 25, 2024, at 6:00 PM at Town Hall 116 Hampton Road, Southampton, and via video conferencing to consider the pre-submission application entitled 25 Sandy Hollow Road LLC. The site plan special exception is for the change of use from auto radiator repair shop to special trade contractor, landscape contractor, located on a two-acre parcel in the HB zoning district, New York State Archaeological Sensitive Area situated at 25 Sandy Hollow Road, Hamlet of Takahoe, Suffolk County Tax Map Number 900-129-239.
Good evening, Board Members. Wayne Brillen, O'Shea Marcensen Brillen, on behalf of 25 Sandy Hollow Road LLC. Principal is Lois Oliver. Property is located just on the northwesterly side of Sandy Hollow Road, County Road 38, I believe it is, approximately 300 feet north of County Road 39. This is all located in the highway business zone. Actually, the zoning line separating that and the residential zone is our northerly property line. Parcel size is 86,593 square feet, just under two acres. So everybody may remember this as the auto radiator repair shop. This is where if you needed a new radiator, you were guaranteed to get it repaired. And Sweet Edwards, who was there, who happened to be a neighbor of mine for many years, was one of the best mechanics you could have gotten to repair that. Sweet passed away and his partner Lois has taken over the business. And to keep it productive, she has engaged a landscape contractor who is occupying the site and has asked, according to the lease, to move forward to get the appropriate approval for a change of use. The property, as you can see on the site plan, also on the aerial photograph, this is a more recent since it was cleaned up. If you go back a few years, you can see that literally probably 100% of the property was covered with vehicles and various state of repair and the like. It's been significantly cleaned up. You can see that was when it was initially cleaned up. But there is a substantial berm with evergreen plantings along County Road, Sandy Hollow Road. The County Road, there's substantial drainage structures in County Road 39 along that location. We're proposing trying to keep, you know, not make many changes. One of the things, though, we do want to respect is the 50-foot transitional buffer on the north. So there is some clearing in that area. And the proposal would be to re-landscape the 50 feet along the zoning line. So there is a buffer to the north from the residential area. So this is a pre-submission and we look forward to whatever comments you can have for us for making the final application.
Any questions for us at this point? Is there someone who'd like to speak to this application? No one? Okay. Zoom?
Zoom.
Anybody on Zoom?
One person on Zoom.
Okay. Yes, please give us your name. You're also on mute.
Sorry, I'm not on this property. Sorry, I got confused and raised my hand by accident. I'm sorry.
Okay, all right. So stay around. What application are you here for? Which one are you here for?
I'm here for, I'm 58 Church Lane.
Okay.
It's Bridgehampton.
That's Bridgehampton. Okay, thanks. You'll come back. So pre-submission, so no, seeing no one here for comments. We'll close with a 10-day written comment period?
Fine.
Yeah? Motion?
Motion.
Motion by Gloria, second by Craig, all in favor.
Aye.
Close abstentions. There are five of us and two absent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Wayne.
As I said, number two is off the agenda. I do have someone here for that. Alex Holloman? Is Alex Holloman here?
I think he just left.
He left, okay. And we'll move right into 157 West Montauk Highway. Check to see if anybody was on Zoom for that. Yeah, they did. It was only one person and she was not here for the application. Okay.
Craig, did I read it?
Yes. Read it into the...
Check for notice?
Yeah, we have proper notice, yeah.
Okay. Please take notice that in accordance with Local Law Number 14 of 2022, a public hearing will be held by the Southampton Town Planning Board on Thursday, January 25, 2024, at 6:00 PM at Town Hall 116 Hampton Road, Southampton, and via video conferencing to consider the pre-submission application entitled 157 West Montauk Highway. The site plan is for a construction of two buildings, 8,058 square feet. No, I'm, no, right, 8,058 square feet and 8,810 square feet for a medical office and office uses on a 1.94 acre parcel, improved with an existing diner building located in the OD zoning district situated at 157 Montauk Highway, Hamlet of Hampton Bay, Suffolk County Tax Map Number 900-222-117.4.
Thanks.
For the applicant, David Gilmore Jr., Greenberg Troy, Montauk Highway, Bridgehampton. As the legal advertisement indicates, this is 157 West Montauk Highway in Hampton Bays, which is the former Hampton Bays diner. Just one correction to make is the second building, the 6,000-square-foot building, is for regular office, not for medical office, so the front building. And we have Matt Elward, our engineer, who run through the plan with you. We've appeared before this board twice in a work session setting. The second one, I believe, the board was concerned or interested in the good ground extension issue and how that would impact the application. Janice Share was here and I think she was pretty clear that that project isn't going to happen and we can go ahead without any, I won't call it interference from the town, but had no impact from any town plan. So I would call Matt Elward, our engineer, up and he will run through quickly, I told him, the plan. You've seen it twice.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Matthew Elward, R&amp;M Engineering, as Mr. Gilmore had said. The property is just under two acres. We're proposing two buildings. One, the medical office, which is 8,058 square feet, the non-medical immediately behind it. Both are along the east side. That non-medical one is 6,244. There's a 50-foot landscape buffer across the front of the property. We require 89 parking stalls and we're providing the 89 parking stalls. We did consider bringing two buildings up on Montauk Highway. It's the side of the parking in the back, but as we discussed, there is that drainage easement that comes through from the DOT. So this was really the ideal location for the two buildings.
So the drainage easement that's coming in has forced you to move your building over to the east for the top building?
Just place the two, right. So the drainage easement comes kind of right there. Where the diner parcel, the diner building is here. So the first building is just to the right of the diner parcel. That easement goes right along the side of the diner. So really, it almost makes that west side unusable.
Yeah. And there's a 50-foot buffer in the front that's to be planted?
Correct.
Any questions from us before we hear? I do have someone from the audience. Susan Von Freddy Gassman. Please.
Thank you for letting me speak. I'm Susan Von Freddy Gassman. I happen to be the president of the Hampton Bays Beautification. I've been a member of the community most of my life and I know a lot of the history. As most people know, HBBA has spent 39 years improving Hampton Bays. And the first major project we had was when we took on a project with the state and the town to build the medians on Route 24. We put electric in there, lighting, landscaping, and we maintain it and take care of it. It goes all the way to the Montauk Highway light on Route 24. Shortly thereafter, we installed the "Welcome to Hampton Bays" sign and gardens. And then after that, we put in the beautiful flagpole and gardens at the corner of the atrium on Montauk Highway and Route 24. So we consider this area the gateway to Hampton Bays and the beginning of our entire community. And we would very much appreciate that this proposal would not only have a beautiful building, but will be maintained professionally and have beautiful extensive landscaping. We were most concerned about the front of the property, of course, you know. We happen to have our own gardens just to the east side of these buildings. And so we, you know, maintain that property. And then after that is the town's property, CPF property. We're very happy to see some movement on this parcel. We've been waiting patiently for many years to see something happen here. Of course, many, many people wanted to see a diner, but that's not going to happen. So most people have gotten used to that idea. But we've really waited a very long time. This particular diner property has been one of the biggest complaints that I have received in the community from people that live there. They don't like the way it looks. It's an awful building. It's falling apart. And we really would like to see this project move ahead quickly and get that building rid of and get something beautiful put in its place. I understand there's a 50-foot setback, which that pleases me, of course, you know. And they, I understand that they will be extensively landscaping it. So, you know, as you come into Hampton Bays, the Macy's on the right has beautiful landscaping. We have the grounds on the left at the flagpole. And this is a very critical, important piece of property that will help make the image of Hampton Bays that much better. So we would like to hopefully see that this can move along quickly and get something started. We've waited a very long time for this. Thank you very much for letting me speak.
Thank you. Thank you for the history. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? I have no one else on the list. No one from the board? Anything more to say, David?
Just quickly, I know that it seems that this has gone slow, but we've been working with the town on different opportunities there and they have all sort of petered out. So we're ready to go. We're ready to move now. We've tried to be, you know, patient and good civic-minded people, which my clients are. I think you'll see when they come in with the landscape plan that the front of it will be beautiful.
Good.
We've gotten the message from the board and the community.
We had a good work session on this a couple of weeks ago.
And we just look forward to moving through it quickly or as quickly as we can. So if we can get a quick turnaround on the report, we'll have an application in quickly and try and get this moving.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would just like to say, having worked with Susan, you know, on a number of projects over the years, that you folks might want to, you know, just make an extra special effort to reach out to her and her group and, you know, try to keep them involved in what your ideas are.
We will. I've known Susan since 96.
You can show her the landscape plan.
She's not going to let us get away with that.
So you know where to find her. She knows where to find you. Okay.
Okay, so I'd like to close this with a 10-day written comment period.
Anybody on Zoom?
Oh, is anyone on Zoom?
No one on Zoom.
So motion for a 10-day written comment period by George.
Second.
Second by Gloria, and all in favor.
Aye.
Close abstentions, five in favor, two absent. Thank you. Okay, number four is 2297 Montauk, Montauk Highway in Bridgehampton. George, he's reading.
We have proper notice.
Proper notice.
Please take notice that in accordance with Local Law Number 14 of 2022, a public hearing will be held by the Southampton Town Planning Board on Thursday, January 25, 2024, at 6:00 PM at Town Hall 116 Hampton Road, Southampton, and via video conferencing to consider the pre-submission application entitled 2297 Montauk LLC. The site plan special exception application is for the construction of a 5,941-square-foot two-story office, two accessory apartments, 35 parking stalls, inclusive of two ADA-compliant parking stalls, and various walkways in an HO zoning district situated at 2279 Montauk Highway, Hamlet of Bridgehampton, Suffolk County Tax Map Number 900-86-1-3.
Ms. Carl.
Good evening, members of the board, Madam Chair. Nice to be with you as always. Excuse my voice. I'm just getting over something. So I'm a little hoarse. As mentioned, the applicant, Carl Benacasa, 860 Montauk Highway, for the applicant. Today, we're here before you on a 39,916-square-foot lot located in the HO zoning district in Bridgehampton at 2297 Montauk Highway. The application is for site plan approval and special exception approval for a two-story office building comprising 5,941 square feet of space at a 32 feet of height, containing multiple offices, a reception area, conference room, and a break room, and a basement for storage. In addition, towards the rear of the lot, we are proposing a 900-square-foot residential building housing two apartments, each of 450 square feet. Parking required for these two uses, 31 spaces under code for the office and four spaces under code for the residential, a total of 35 spaces, and that's what is being provided. There are a number of variances that are required and we are before the zoning board next week on this application for relief, for side yard setbacks, for total side yard, eastern side yard setbacks. Relief for allowing us to build two apartments where three are required by code and relief to allow the construction of detached ground floor apartments that code requires they be above the office building. So we, there is a good deal of relief required and we are before the zoning board for that purpose. As far as tonight is concerned, we've laid out the proposed site plan. Pre-submission conference is generally for purposes of hearing what the board and public have to say, so we are all ears.
Just so you know, Carl, earlier today, we voted for a referral to the ZBA, asking them to hold off until they get a report from us.
To hold off on issuing the variance. They wouldn't issue it without it anyway.
You're right, but we made it formal.
We appreciate that.
And so the Landmarks and Historic Districts Board issued a report?
I haven't seen the report. There was a hearing last week. I was present for it.
Yeah.
Do you have the report? I haven't...
We do have the report.
Yeah.
I have it here. We can get a copy.
I know what their concerns were and I can tell you that the applicant is actively addressing them.
Okay, you'll hear from some people in the community as well.
I'm sure we will.
Because that historic district is something that's been worked on for a long, long time and it needs to be upheld. So are there any questions here from the board? Well, then let's get right into...
I would just say, does counsel have that or anyone have a copy of that letter that they...
I don't have it.
Do you have a copy you could share?
I don't have a copy, but you can have it. Yeah, can you do that?
That'd be great.
That would be great. It's a detailed and important report.
I mean, I guess I would just say that when I saw the pictures of the building that's before us, it doesn't look at all like it belongs in historic district. So my personal opinion is it needs to be reworked significantly.
The aesthetic.
I'm only addressing the aesthetics right now.
Understood.
Yeah, it has to be consistent with the historic nature of the historic district. And there are some design guidelines in that that you might want to take a look at, Carl. So Pamela Harwood. Bridgehampton Civic.
Good evening. My name is Pamela Harwood. I'm with the Bridgehampton Civic Association and the president. Here we are again. That's the way our organization is feeling. For the third Farrell Building in the Bridgehampton-Hamlet Office District, where right from the start, Farrell Development Company has submitted a site plan that does not conform to the town's building code for this zone. And in only one week from today, variances will again be requested at a ZBA public hearing. Farrell is asking for a special exemption to build a 5,491-foot office building where 3,000 square feet is allowed. In order to build over 5,000 square feet, the requirement for a special exemption is that the plan should include three apartments on the second floor of the building, including one for a moderate-income family. Instead, this plan indicates a separate residential building and it would only include two of the required three apartments. Town officials have strongly advocated for the need for affordable housing. This is a chance to demonstrate that importance by rejecting this plan to shortchange the required three apartments. The pre-submission plan describes an additional 900 square feet for the separate residential building, which would put the total building area over the maximum 6,000, which is not allowed even with a special exemption. Farrell's plan also calls for side yard setbacks that are closer to the property lines than are allowed by the building code. And the necessary areas would go all the way back to Church Lane. These deviations are not necessary. Scaling back the size of the office building is the answer to staying within the building code. The plan indicates that traffic can enter and exit from Montauk Highway to and from Church Lane, which is a quaint and quiet residential street. Rather, for the sake of the residential community, we advocate that the ingress and egress to this development should only come from Montauk Highway. This office building is already being advertised on the site LoopNet as a medical building seeking tenants for 9,093 square feet of office space. The rendering in this ad is for a dark brown modernist structure. Since this proposed building is now within the new Bridgehampton Main Street Historic District, sorry, I'm repeating Jackie and Gloria, a certificate of appropriateness will now have to be issued by the Landmarks and Historic Districts Board before this can proceed. What we say is, it's in the historic district. It should look historic. All you have to do is go down to the corner of Lumber Lane and Montauk Highway and see the NYU Langone Building. It's not really all their building. And see what that builder built, even before there was an historic district, which really just happened a few weeks ago. But they built something beautiful to create, to mimic those corners with the Topping Rose House and that building and the Nathaniel Rogers House. And they didn't have to do it. It looked, it looks beautiful. And it's the home of medical office space. And so I just wanted to show you because we've got a rendering here. You know, and again, I know, you know, this may not be a site plan thing, but you did refer to it. But just so everybody has seen it, this is what's being advertised for this building. So these are line drawings, but this you can see. It looks like the iconic Medical Center, you know. And here, this is also significant. I think when you see a rendering like this, you see how close without the required setbacks. They're right on top of the Saunders property and they're right on top of their other neighbor, the Salabello Antiques. Still one of the small remaining homes that are being used as an office. But they're right on top of the neighbors. And I think the codes were written so that this wouldn't happen. And yet it continually happens and relief is continually given. And I know that will happen, you know, be a discussion at the ZBA, but it is included in the site plan that you're thinking about tonight, those setbacks. And so I hope you take all this into account. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Peter... Theon?
She took my best lines.
Peter Egan, E.
Fader, F-E-D-E-R. Peter Fader, Bridgehampton Civic Association Treasurer. I really would strongly suggest that setback relief for this particular project not be granted. There is absolutely no community benefit for granting the setback relief. And I just think it's, you know, the size of the project should be of such an appropriate scale that setback relief not be needed. Finally, as far as the look of the project, it is in the historic district. It should look historic and not look like a spaceship. And finally, just one other comment. I noticed, having spoken at these and other hearings, that so many townspeople are now forced to hire attorneys for the simple reason to remind these various boards what the laws and regulations are. You know, it's your job to uphold these laws and regulations. We shouldn't have to hire attorneys to remind you of that. And I just think, you know, you should be mindful of that. Thank you.
Okay. Michelle Augustino?
It's okay. I signed it in case I had to speak, but I'm...
Passing?
Yep.
Rana Newhart?
I'm passing as well.
You're passing as well? Okay. Joan McGovern?
They're the engineers.
Oh, they just, they're part of the project? Okay. Joan?
Yes, Joan McGovern from Toomey-Latham. I have a letter that I'd like to hand to the board. It has an alternative proposal on the last page.
Thank you.
Good evening. As the board may see from the first page of the letter, and to the prior speaker's point, we represent owners. We've been retained by owners of 16 properties that are impacted by this proposal. They were forced to hire an attorney because of their concern over this proposal. Many of these properties, as listed there, are historic properties and have been listed as contributing properties in a 2009 report. In addition to the Church Lane residents, who we believe will be negatively impacted by egress and ingress from Church Lane, the surrounding lanes, we believe, will also be negatively impacted. As to this particular property, it had, until recently demolished, a house, a residential house that was demolished despite the recommendation that it be preserved. Parcel itself has never been a through street to Church Lane. Access has always been taken off Montauk Highway. Trying to summarize our comments for you. Funneling commercial traffic onto Church Lane does not further the objective of making Bridgehampton's roads safer, nor preserving their residential character. The proposed site with its intended needs for both area and use variances needs to be carefully scrutinized by this board. At its core, the application seeks to radically change this parcel from its historical residential use to maximizing its commercial... from its historical residential use to maximizing its commercial use. The applicant is starting with a clean slate. We believe that our proposal will resolve many of these issues and allow for the retention of the residential character of Church Lane and its adjoining lanes. We also want to flag that we believe there's a negative impact to the, on sequoia, to the extent that historic structures are considered part of the environment and a, and a resource that should be considered as part of an environmental review. There are properties on either side of the applicant, one of which, it's true, has ingress through Montauk Highway and egress through Church Lane, which is 2287 Montauk Highway. But we believe it's not a good comparable because it's such a narrow lot that they park at angles and you enter through Montauk and you leave through Church. There's no, it's not wide enough to allow for turnaround. Whereas the property on the other side of 2287, 2317, has a big enough parking lot like 2297, the applicant, that there's room for turnaround. We also believe that to the extent they're proposing affordable housing, which we commend them, it should be attractive and residential, not plopped in the middle of a parking lot. So our proposal attempts to sequester and screen off the residential housing so that you take access through Church Lane only for the residential housing. So as I said, on the last page of the letter is our proposal, and I'm happy to answer any questions. I guess to summarize, our proposal retains the residential character of Church Lane and Hildreth Lane in particular. It permits these lanes to continue to be safe for walking and biking and children and older people and dog walkers. And it would facilitate and enhance the quality of affordable housing because it's sequestered and shielded from the commercial parking lot. And it would reduce runoff and drainage, which one of the neighbors is going to speak to, and I believe she had dialed in earlier on Zoom. So I will let her speak to the drainage issues.
So let me just comment on the egress and exiting onto Church. The state DOT is now requiring that there be no exiting onto the highway, which dumps everything onto Church Lane. And Church Lane isn't even categorized as a collector's street, which is one notch above a regular road. I mean, if anything, maybe Civic can lobby for that, that that street be addressed. It's a narrow road. It's bad, it's not even paved properly. And all of the exiting from the properties on the highway are dumping onto Church. So let, check out the New York State DOT, the categorization of Church, which I strongly feel should be elevated so that it's properly paved. It has side margins. And so I just wanted to make that, that comment.
What is it now? What is it?
It's nothing. It's not, streets are categorized by basic, collector, main artery, and it goes on. And then there are certain requirements for each. It's not even, Lumber Lane is a collector's street. Church is not even a collector's street. So you could look into that. I think it's important. But the state DOT calls the shots. I mean, sometimes when we are, we don't want a property to have a left-hand turn going out onto Montauk Highway. We could be blocked by the DOT and have to go through a rather convoluted requirement to get car, in entering one way and exiting another. But this is not even going back onto Montauk Highway. This is required by the state to go onto Church. So I just bring that up because I've had an issue with it as well.
Well, thank you for your thoughts on that. And I believe there's a neighbor who wants to speak.
Okay. Is there someone on Zoom? Yes, hi. Your name, please?
I'm Meredith Berkowitz, and I'm also a director and secretary of the Bridgehampton Civic Association. Pamela Harwood already mentioned many of the things that I was going to talk about, including the significance of the new historic district. Many of us have worked so hard to see it established. But it does seem like there is agreement and understanding among the board of these new guidelines and that they will apply to this property. I also realize that we're here to talk about site plan and not that the ZBA will separately address the variance request. But it's also somewhat hard to consider the site plan without also thinking about the significant variances requested. My particular thing I wanted to address are the reduction in the apartments. As Pamela indicated, we have to start to hold landowners to building toward compliance with the code, not building with the expectation that they can build what they want and variances will be granted. When New York State created zoning boards of appeal, they were created to deal with unforeseeable unintended hardships that could inadvertently be created by legislation. What is happening now in Southampton in the last several years is that variances are becoming the norm, no longer the exception. And that should be of concern to the planning board, I would hope, and the planning process. The code was drafted to require three apartments for a building of this size. And yet it seems rarely if ever enforced. So what's the point then, you know, putting it in the code? The building could be scaled back so that it wouldn't require the setback relief and to accommodate the three required apartments, especially if they're going to be in a separate building. There's really no reason that this property can't have three. I also echo what Peter said, which is that, you know, you have ordinary citizens and members of the community having to hire attorneys just to make sure that code provisions are followed and upheld. And that seems to me, again, of concern because it should be the town who's making sure that its code is enforced as written, with exceptions made when there are true needs for exceptions. Last thing I wanted to ask about is really a question that just came up because of what you said, Chair LaFaro. The New York State categorization of Church Street and requiring, you mentioned that they are no longer permitting egress onto the highway. Is that something that can be changed with lobbying? You know, the R Civic Association, is that something that would warrant further discussion with the Department of Transportation? Is that, is that a legislative enactment or that's a policy?
It's legislative and it would go through the town. I mean, you'd have to, the town is responsible for setting streets. Right, Tom?
Right. I'm not aware of the specific restriction against having exits onto the highway. I know it's become problematic and I believe it's discouraged. But whether that's a formal part of the application or the review, I'm not sure the DOT would be the people to tell you that. Road classifications, my understanding, are based on both somewhat on the road characteristics and what roads they connect to, as well as the traffic volume on that road. That's how road characteristics. And there, as, as the chair alluded to, there are everything from minor, minor arterials, major arterials, collector roads, residential roads. Again, those determinations are made by the state based on the characteristics of the road and the, and the volume, is my understanding. That data is available on the New York State DOT website for every road in the town.
I will definitely take a look at that. But my concern is that as they start to push more traffic off the highway onto these backroads, it changes, even if you can get them redesigning it as, you know, collector, to turn them into, let's say, like what a Lumber Lane is, it, it changes the character of those streets.
It does. It does. Absolutely.
Yeah. And so that's why I'm wondering if there's a way to, you know, address this more from, you know, to understand what, one, what the concerns are about egressing onto the highway and why they're trying, I mean, I know why they're trying to force the traffic onto backroads, but they're sort of just trading one problem for another, it seems. And so, you know, what, what would be the best way to address that? It seems like it's something we need to, I guess, look into.
Yeah.
This would be handled by the DOT Permits Division. Any new driveway, I don't know if a new driveway is proposed to be cut here or not. And, but any new curb cuts, because this is a state highway, would be reviewed by the New York State DOT Permits Division for, for Long Island, Region 10. And as I said, the collector, the roadway classification system is based on the characteristics of the road and the volume of the road as it exists now. And, and that information is also available on the, on the state DOT website under the Traffic Data Viewer. If you Google New York State DOT, Region 10, Traffic Data Viewer, it will take you to a map of the entire state. And you can zoom in and zoom in and zoom in to reach Bridgehampton, and you will find traffic volume data and other information.
Great. I will definitely.
Good information, Tom. Thank you.
We, as a planning board, what recourse do we have? We, if we take a look at an application like this and we make determination that we do not like the traffic flow, we deem it inadequate, dangerous, or otherwise, can we write a referral to the DOT, like to, can we?
Well, I think we do on some applications, you know, where we have no left turn going out. The DOT has to put its stamp of approval on that. We just can't override the DOT. It's a higher authority. But I do know, Tom, that in the last few years, this no exiting onto Montauk Highway has been seriously enforced so that all of those redone buildings along that segment, which is Farrell, Saunders, et cetera, were all forced to exit onto Church.
Right. And I, that may be a formal, you know, policy at this point because exiting out there, we know that's very tight parking. We know it's high-volume traffic. So that may have become a standard for that area.
Yeah.
Can Church get it to a light? And I think Pamela might be alluding to this call. It seems the site plan actually envisages two-way traffic going onto Montauk and.
This, this is pointing two-way traffic both onto Church Lane and two-way traffic going back onto Montauk Highway.
Well, they may be, that site plan might not fly. I mean, if we're looking at that site plan and we make a referral to the DOT to in any way reconfigure that, DOT is going to weigh in. So you're.
This is a pre-submission conference. This is our initial plan to get feedback. We're actually already considering adjusting whether this is a two, two-way traffic here or not. We're considering comments made by the Landmarks Board, which I assume we'll get eventually. But based on what they said at the meeting, we understand what their concerns were. So this is really the first step in the process, and this is the first iteration of this plan.
Right. Okay. So as long as you're willing to work with us on it, that's great. Pamela, did you have a question?
You know, I don't want to go out of turn, and I don't think Meredith will mind me.
Go, go up to the mic.
I want to point out something else. As you know, and it has been said, there was an historic home on this property that was demolished, much to the chagrin of the Landmarks and Historic Districts Board. And many of us actually have photographs of the devastation, not just, you know, taking down the house. But there were many trees on this property, and every single one was cut back in one day. It took them, it was so quick.
Hours. I took photographs too.
And we have photographs of it. And yet I look at the site plan, not the one here, but the one in the rendering of the real estate ad, and all I see is big parking lot and big office building and the residential house, which is not even allowed to be a separate structure. And, and so I wonder if you can do anything about introducing back some trees onto this property. And it may be at the expense of the size of the building. But I think the community was horrified at the time. Many people have photographs of it. And introducing some native trees back onto the property, could be oaks or something like that, I think would be very much appreciated.
We, we always look at it landscape plan.
Yeah, great.
We will here too.
Yeah, I just thought of it. If I didn't come up right away, I would have forgotten. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, Meredith.
Thank you, Meredith. Are you, are you done? We'll go to the next person. Thank you very much.
Joan McGovern again. I just wanted.
Hold on one second. I know you didn't hear. I was like, can you repeat that?
I was just something else to say. If, if there's any way, as you go through the planning process, to at least try to go with the DLE to not force that traffic onto Church, that, that would be, you know, I think the community would greatly appreciate that. Thank you.
We hear you.
So, I mean, I've, I'm seeing this for the first time, and this isn't really my neighborhood. So I'm not sure, but the question is for you, Carl. So it's not, I'm not very familiar with the neighborhood and the building. But the question I was going to ask before Pam, Pamela mentioned that people have photographs of the building, which, I mean, I, I look at a random building, and it just seems to be out of character with what, what is there right now from what I can see from the building. And has any thought been given to, you know, size of building apart from that, but actually doing a design of a building that is more in character with what's around it and what was there before? So at least maintain that, that.
Has thought been given to it?
Yes.
Yes. The, subsequent to the, and again, forgive my voice, but so I think you can all hear me, right? So subsequent to the Landmarks Board, that was a concern they raised as well, the appearance of the building. And I know that the applicant is actively considering revisions to the plan.
Okay.
And that's what I can tell you. That's what I, I've had discussions with them as early as.
Early stages.
Today.
So you're hearing, you're hearing the comments. Good.
We are, yes.
Good. Are there two more people on the Zoom? Yes, welcome. May we have your name?
Yeah, I'm Nora Goldberg. I, I'm also a member of the Civic Association. So I'm not going to repeat, I hope, too much of what's been said. But I'm here mostly as a resident of the immediate neighborhood. I live on Trelawney Road, just off of Paulsy. And we've had our home here for 30 years. We recently moved here full-time, which is why you can see all the stuff that I haven't put away yet because we had nowhere to put it. But the, the problem that I'm seeing, we, we moved in full-time over the summer. And since that time, our lovely neighborhood and all of our neighbors are suddenly playing whack-a-mole against some really questionable development plans. I spoke before the planning board, I guess a month or two ago, about the Harvell Store being turned into a marijuana shop, which I didn't really have a problem with the marijuana shop. It was really just the location of it. Neighbors just had to come up with literally millions of dollars to, you know, stop the, and hopefully it will go through, stop the Topping Farm from being developed. And now we're hearing about this office building in the neighborhood. And, you know, I'm just surprised by it because the reputation that Farrell has had for all the years that, that I have known about him is to build truly beautiful homes that have enhanced our neighborhood. And so I don't know why he went off in this direction. Unfortunately, the only block that was developed on the Topping Farm that was sold recently was right around the corner from me. And it looks more like this new proposed office building than most of the other homes that he's built. So I, I think what I'm, I'm here to say is that not only shouldn't people have to hire attorneys, we shouldn't have to, and I won't say we, people should not have to be spending millions of dollars to protect our neighborhood. I think that it's really, that the planning board and the zoning board are beholden to, to protect us. I won't go into the motives for people's, you know, reasons for wanting certain types of development and not caring whether they fit into the neighborhood. But we, we really need to ask for your help. And some, I'm, I'm glad to hear that you've been mentioning, this doesn't seem to be in keeping with the new historical district. But. But this should be a non-starter. A rendering of this sort and presentation for a building that's proposed that looks like either a university building or a municipal building. It reminds me a bit of the firehouse in Southampton. It just shouldn't happen. So you have to be able to comply with the historical district. And if your building doesn't fit into a plot without variances, build it someplace else. Not that we have to have a neighborhood that is overrun with development that is out of character and just too large for what the lots will bear and what the traffic will bear. Thanks.
Thank you.
May I say something real quick?
Yeah.
So this is a pre-submission conference, right? This is kicking it through. This is a two-way conversation. So, you know, the third speaker that mentioned feeling a need to have counsel. I would disagree with you respectfully because we're just talking it through right now. This board especially is, you know, we're very sympathetic to the, you know, keeping the character, especially at Bridge Hampton, the Historic Districts. We'll do everything we can to try to steer the applicant to make something beautiful. We'll push real hard. What I would hope is that you have faith in us a little bit to work with the applicant and try to come up with something that works for everyone. This is the very, very beginning. And I think, you know, you heard from Carl too, that he has an applicant that's willing to work with you. So I think if we do it right, we work together, we'll be able to find something that works for everyone. I just, I get a little concerned when people walk in like this. You know, let's listen, let's work together. I think we'll be better that way. My two cents.
Thank you, Craig. It would be beneficial if you had a meeting with the civic, with Pam and some of her people to, because this is, the amount of effort that went into creating the Historic District years requires that any development within that be very aware of, pay attention to, read what the Historic District is requiring, and be part of the community. So, you know, you talk to your applicant, but it might be worthwhile for you to set up a meeting with Pamela and her group.
If I may add, I know the Historic District was recently approved, but it's been in conversation for months. And I'm, I guess I'll say annoyed that this is the picture I got as an example of what you want to build because it's not historic. And I know there's been work done on the applicant's part, but maybe you should have said, we'll go back and try to fix it before we bring it to the community and the board? Because this is clearly not, this, these renderings are not historic. That's my personal opinion.
Did we get a copy of the historic notes, Pam?
No, apparently it's in panels. So we'll, I'll wait to talk to you Thursday tomorrow and see if they were prepared.
Get one to call. Okay. Is there someone else on the Zoom? There was a woman.
Yeah, there's still three more.
Oh. Okay. Yes, can we have your name, please?
Yes, good evening, Mayor, members of the board. It's Preston Phillips.
The floor is yours.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to say thank you for your comments tonight. It's been reassuring, I think, to me and many people watching that you've got the long view here and not the short view. I also wanted to reiterate and emphasize that the setback relief being requested on Main Street, I think goes very much against the grain of an Historic District, particularly at the property line with the longest staff, John Cybello Antique Store, which everyone knows and has been there for many, many decades. It looks very much to me to be squeezed and sort of overwhelmed by the proposed building. And the other comment I was going to make, Pamela stepped up to say that the removal, in fact, erasure of the scores of mature trees, which were cut down literally in a few days on this property, was really abhorrent to everyone who loves Bridge Hampton. It was very much, the entire site was cleared by all the way to the property line. And the front yard and the side yard and the rear yard, no attempt was made to maintain the character of this site. And I think this is the norm of this developer, who as many of you will recall began his presence in Bridge Hampton, demolishing Elaine Vincent's historic Victorian mans on Main Street and cut down the many, many mature, centennial maple trees on that property. So we can't forget really who we're dealing with here. And while I love the idea that we, this is the first salvo, that they'll come back with something else and it's a very good thing, we have to really focus on the fact that this is someone who pretty much just goes ahead and does whatever he wants to do. So thank you for hearing that.
Thank you, Preston. We have someone else in the Zoom?
Joining now.
You know, it would be worth Carl's while to get a copy of the Bridge Hampton Historic District, the actual document that we all read and when we had a referral on it. We get one to you, Carl? Do you have one?
It should be online.
It's online.
Is it online?
It should be. Yeah.
That's it then?
Yeah.
Okay. So ball's in your court.
For what?
To Dr. Farrell. Yes, please.
Hi, this is Julie Burmeyer, another civic member. As well, I don't live directly in the neighborhood, but I live close by. And I just want to encourage that we use the advice from the Landmarks Board as much as, I don't know, I haven't seen the letter, I'll certainly contact Ed and see what he's proposing. But I've sat in on many of their meetings and it seems to me they're very careful. Descriptions of the properties that they are, look at, the advice is absolutely ignored. And I'm glad to see that you all seem to be on page with the rest of us, that, especially in this case, that their advice, whatever it may be, should be calculated in the refer, in the recommendations. And thanks very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Julie. We have the next speaker, please.
That is all.
That is it. Any other comments from anyone in the room? Do you want?
I was waiting for, this is Joan McGivern again. Carrie Leitz, who lives at 58 Church, was going to dial in. She has a significant drainage problem.
Yes, we got a letter on that, yeah.
Clearcut the property.
Yeah.
She just raised her hand to let her in.
Yes.
Okay, so we'll let her in. Yes, her property is now below the level of the Farrell property. Yeah, so there you are. Okay. Nope. You're muted again. There you go.
Sorry, I was having trouble getting in.
Okay. And your last name, Carrie?
Yes, it's Carrie Leitzes. So my property abuts the lot, so I'm right next door. I'm 58 Church Lane. I have a wonderful cottage from the 1920s that is spectacular, small and special. And when the property was purchased, I sent a letter in. So just tell me if I shouldn't look at it myself.
No, go ahead for the record, yeah.
Okay. So when the property was purchased, it was clear cut. So all of the grasses, any foliage, any trees, there were tall grasses that were across the whole property. Everything was clear cut and the property was graded. So I'm approximately a foot, a foot higher at the highest point from where my property is. And since that happened, I've had flooding in my basement. And then in addition to that, so it really changed the absorption of the water in the land and the runoff. So there was a lot, the water patterns changed. And it's, I now have flooding, a little bit of flooding in my basement. And I also have tremendous, I had tremendous water erosion around the foundation of my house, which I didn't realize, which was the cement to the foundation. And an outcome of that was rats that were part of the, you know, all the animals living next door migrated to my house and they, where the erosion happened between the cement and the house, they burrowed their way into the basement. And I didn't even realize until I had an infestation in my basement of rats. And I had to have pacunol come, they had to take hazmat suits, they had to sterilize it with Clorox. In the crawl space, they had to completely spray cement the area that had been corroded from the water erosion. And it was just, it was traumatic, but also very expensive. And then I also put a French drain around two sides of the house that abut the property. And because the property, it was grandfathered in from the early, from the 1920s, I'm right up against the property line. So I'm very concerned that some type of water drainage plan is carefully considered. And I know that if you clear more than an acre of land, that you're supposed to have a SWIP plan in place. So I'm just, you know, I'm very concerned about the water drainage plan.
Okay. We do have your letter and it's in the record and it'll be added to the whole project. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Carl.
What was the address of the last house?
58. 58 Church Lane. He's right next to.
You can see the house right there.
Yeah. Joan, did you need to speak?
Joan McGivern again. I just wanted to correct one potential misimpression. Their property to the one side, 22 Night 87, does go through one way from Montauk to Church Lane. But the other property, that Saunders, the other property, which is a Farrell property, only has ingress and egress through Montauk Highway. There's no through to Church Lane.
Right. I believe all that happened before the DOT came down on that. So we'll check and you can check. And Carl, you can check.
Check.
The ingress and the egress on the state DOT.
Oh.
Okay, everybody on this list has spoken. Does the board have anything more to say? No?
Is there anyone on line?
No. No, no one's on line. Preston?
A couple of things I would note, just in summation. The property to the east does not border Church Lane. It's not a through lot. So that's something to note. It's distinct in that way from the property before you. This was not, just a few things on the Historic District. This was not determined to be a contributing asset or contributing property. And this was, there was a mention about affecting historic structures. There are no historic structures impacted by this application.
But you are, Carl, in the district. You know that.
Yes, we are in the district. But this property is not determined to be a contributing asset. But yes, subject to the constraints of the district. With respect to the neighbor at 58 Church Lane, the application does propose a all stormwater will be captured on-site, as is natural, and filtrate to groundwater via pre-catch basins and concrete triwell. So whatever the site plan ends up looking like in its final stages, it will certainly address that issue. I'm happy to have conversations with her now about her current issues and possible ways to mitigate that.
And civic? Have a conversation with the civic?
Sure. It's not my decision, as you know, but I will strongly advise.
That's important.
Yes.
Okay. No? Okay. So entertain a motion to close with a 10-day written comment period?
Motion.
Motion by Craig.
Second.
By Gloria. All in favor. Those absentions, five in favor, two absent. Thank you very much for coming. You can send letters in. The record's open. Motion to adjourn?
Motion.
By Tom, second by George. All in, five in favor, two absent. We are adjourned. Thank you.